Excuse me, everybody. Listen, this is a city council meeting, so they have to address the business of the city first. And then, after the business, I have concerns. I'm not, can't take it no more, I promise. And so, let them address the business first, and then they're gonna hear our concerns.
Thank you, Pastor Robinson, thank you, Bishop. Resolution 1014-26 passes. Next resolution this evening, Resolution 1014-27. We would like to introduce this as Councilmember's president. Seeing objections, Stephanie, will you read the title of the resolution for us, please?
A resolution authorizing intergovernmental cooperation agreement in the City of Ferguson Hills for vehicle maintenance and repair services.
Resolution 1014-28 passes. Next on our agenda is those requiring first reading. Bill 705-6. We would like to introduce this as Councilmember's president. Seeing objections, Stephanie, will you read the title of the resolution for us, please?
In accordance with regarding certain properties and the cost of affording and removing weeds provided under Chapter 46 Vegetation, Article 3 Weeds and Mines of the Code of the City of Ferguson, Missouri.
Next on our first reading is Bill 705-7. Without objection, we'll introduce this as Councilmember's president. Stephanie, will you read the title of the resolution for us, please?
In accordance with letting special tackles against certain properties for the cost of affording of buildings is provided under Chapter 7 Building and Building Regulations of the Code of the City of Ferguson, Missouri.
Next on our agenda is Bill 705-9. Without objection, we'll introduce this as Councilmember's president. Stephanie, will you read the title of the resolution for us, please?
In accordance regarding certain properties and the cost of removing traction debris provided under Chapter 28 Units of the Code of the City of Ferguson, Missouri.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is Bill 705-9. Without objection, we'll introduce this as Councilmember's president. Stephanie, will you read the title of the bill for us, please?
In accordance repealing Section 44-58 and the fee imposed by the city relating to the towing of vehicles.
Next on our agenda is Bill 706-0. Without objection, we'll introduce this as Councilmember's president. Stephanie, will you read the title of the bill for us, please?
In accordance of all the heating certain fees associated with the municipal court cases by limiting Section 13-70 of the municipal code and repealing Section 13-72 in its entirety.
Next on our agenda this evening is Bill 706-1. Without objection, we'll introduce this as Councilmember's president. Stephanie, will you read the title of the bill 706-1 for us, please?
In accordance diminishing the budget by reducing and limiting municipal court revenue to be appropriated as part of the general budget and establishing a special line item for certain municipal court revenue to be used for projects to benefit the community.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next on our agenda is Bill 706-2. Without objection, we'll introduce this as Councilmember's president. Stephanie, will you read the title of the bill for us, please?
In accordance repealing, in its entirety, Section 13-58 of the municipal code pertaining to the separate defense of failure to appear in the municipal court.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next on our agenda is Bill 706-3. Without objection, we'll introduce this as Councilmember's president. Stephanie, will you read the title of Bill 706-3 for us, please?
In accordance of the City of Ferguson repealing Section 44-31 of the Traffic Code and enacting a new Article 3 of Chapter 33 establishing a citizen review board.
I thank everyone for their patience. We do have to complete this business that we can do before those issues that we've been running earlier. We are going to move now to the citizens' conference portion of the meeting. There are two, there are two microphones in this aisle to the left and also in this aisle to the right. We're going to have to be following names. So whatever I'm going to be calling names is for the common portion of the meeting. If you do have a comment or a card, please find your person in the aisle. I'll run it to you. I already have a stand here. And I'll start by going down the aisle. I'm going to call two names. And I'll ask you to each to a microphone. Starting with this George and Darby. Miss Darby, if you can find your way to a microphone either to the left or to the right in the aisle. If those three need the microphones in the aisles, we will be calling you by name. So you will need to turn it on the microphone. You will need to turn it on the comment or a card. And we will call you by name. If you don't see Mr. Darby, so will Mr. Keith Jackson. 2240 Windsor. Blue microphone. Is this Mr. Jackson? This is Mr. Jackson. Mr. Lee. And then Keith Jackson.
Are you sure it's on? Now I'm sure it's on.
Tell anyone.
First off, let me apologize. I picked up my comment card in China. I actually picked it up off the table on the way here. No official said anything to me about it. Now, if I had to get into my comment, my name's George Wilson. I've been the first to read it just over fifteen years. I raised two voices. With that being said, let me say this. First off, I can be a change, period. Of course, for a man who has a role to be remembered on, when I come to the job. First things, first, what I see up there for me is a tax station with a lot of representatives. The present administration of Ferguson, the Ferguson Falls District, and Ferguson Police Department to me represent a good old boy that they were. Don't touch it all up. Look exactly what that means. It's not candy that a city of all cities can sip on at Ferguson. But we need without end like a dish. Well, and absolutely, we must ban work and American plan. The first thing we must do. Number one, we must come together as one and stay together. We gather, we distribute dollars, go in the room and burn it out. Don't put it on a wagon, Paul. Chris, Love, Ruth, Baffles, Jews, white people. If you're not rich, keep behind me. If you're not rich, you too, you're so weak. More fast than you play. Now, if you can't answer one. Second thing we must do. We must match all of us 100%. Once we match, we must hope 100% everybody. Where else, white people, who might be harassed, mystery, taking the time when I want, or calling when I like? Now, here's the example. My people want even. The thing that I've been doing research for months. Ever since this situation happened. When this situation came, it is about a lot more than what I have in mind. This situation is about the liberty of democracy. I'm talking to the folks.
Alright, alright, you're in my town now, my brother. You're in my town now, right? You're in my town, my brother. Thank you, thank you. Uh, the question that I want to raise, and if the City of Ferguson ever received any funds from the regional, from east-west gateway party, within the last 18, 20, 30, 40 years, listen back, I would like for that question to be answered again. If the City of Ferguson ever received any funds from the east-west gateway party as it relates to the regional housing mobility program. So, my name is Leo C. Could you, could you, could you hear your name? Robert Leo C. Sir. It is imperative that you understand that people have been depressed, repressed, and oppressed, over and over and over again, that refuse to come out and vote. I refuse to accept that. I believe, sir, that the people here in Ferguson did it in fact, came out and voted. It is hard for me to believe that 60% of the black people and this is the outcome. Thank you for all of the things that you have accomplished, sir. All of the things that you have accomplished. I want to thank you. But, sir, it is clear to me that there is some corruption in the voting power around here. I refuse to accept any, any shot to all of that, sir. Please put all of that committee together as it relates to the voting process. One last thing I have to say since we go on. Section 28. I should be no more business purpose. Executing, investigating, preventing, acting in relation to the property case and the legitimate case, which is to ignore the contractors. Our office, video, has been disheartening, underutilized, and a dangerous piece of discrimination. You can't put a good thing together to drive the, something of a protest action. To me, everybody who got these business and your path, we see these business, sir. I want to thank you for your most precious time. Understand this, that as can you help, sir. Utilize the wrong rules of orders and suspend the rules that affect the operation of the people's keepers. Leave your business, baby.
First of all, my name is Karen Graves. And I have been a Ferguson slash captain partner for 16 years. And I'll tell you this, I don't oppose to getting rid of all these small municipality police stations. They did get rid of Jennings. And I don't think it would hurt to get rid of a lot of the smaller municipalities. For one, for one reason is because you make your money off of our backs. You know, we don't make a lot of money. We're in constant struggle. I have three sons. It's been a constant, I have two sons that are 17. They've only been driving a year. It's been a constant vacuum of getting pulled over and fined. And we just paid, my twins, hey, he had a double failure to appear. And he's 17, and this started when he was 16. You know, this started when he was 16 years old. He doesn't have any control over the court. I have to be there. I travel for a living. So every time you give him a court date and he has a failure to appear, it's more money. We just paid over $500 just yesterday on two of my children. And I have three sons. You guys don't answer the phone. It's impossible. It's impossible to get through on the phone just to ask for maybe another court date. If I'm out of country, I could be in Israel. I could be in Germany. I could be anywhere. And it takes a lot of effort and time and money from my household when I have to constantly come to court over something as frivolous as a blinker not being turned on. You know, or a light out in the back. It's a constant vacuum and a constant struggle that we go through. You know, and there are adolescent, there are adolescent behaviors that, like an article I read, that are not severely punished as our children. And I would like for liaison, my oldest son was 16. He was walking from my house to his dad's house a mile away. He was stopped at 7 o'clock in the morning. He, he went to CBC High School. That was the year he went to CBC High School. He was stopped, he was, he was running from my house over to Luisa. I live on Holland Street. He was running from Holland to Luisa. At 7 o'clock in the morning, he was stopped by the police, asked if they could check his pockets, his book bag. And he called me and he said, "Mom, Ferguson stopped me again." I just cried, because I never knew he had been stopped in the first place. I cried for over half an hour. You know, I'm thinking, oh, this is a stop. In an early morning life, that alone, you're by yourself. Walking from this long town to.
I'm already hearing that stuff, so we got, we got bigger issue on this side. And I understand your issue, because your issue is more important as well. And I, and I, I really have that comment, but I do understand what you're saying.
Before you begin, can I, can I make one announcement? Because there's obviously people already gathering in the aisles. This is going to be very difficult to go by these cards and ask, to make their way up there in the, in the, uh, hopes that we can move through this and get everybody accommodated. But I'm just going to ask, if you do turn in a card, to go ahead and please get in line in the aisle, so that we can try to accommodate everyone who wants to speak. Also, you must state your name and your address for the record when you speak, so.
Sir, you are making my promise. I'm not going to do that. My name, Jackson, Brian O'Sullivan. My first comment is, when are we going to get rid of Ferguson? City Council, mayor, and chief? That's my first question. I want that asked before I go home this evening. My second question is, if we can't have it, we're going to shut it down. That's a rule. If we can't have it, we shut it down, period. I'm tired of the police brutality. I'm tired of, uh, my people as black people in this way by Ferguson. We cannot take it anymore. We cannot accept it. Black people, we must unite. To unite. If we don't like each other, that's too bad. We got to unite, because we are becoming extinct. We have to love one another. Black love is taught at home. It's not taught at school. We've been brainwashing at school. That's why we don't know nothing. So if we don't know nothing, we don't do nothing. If you don't know that, you don't, you won't do that. Okay? Second of all, sir, I'm sorry, I want you to pay attention to, excuse me. Hannah, disrespectful. Totally disrespectful. This is a town hall meeting. Pastor, I appreciate you letting us come in the church, but we should have did this at school. We should have did this in the school. Okay? We've been disrespected for too long. All of these town hall meetings, I appreciate that, but if every single black person in here don't get up and speak, cancel it. Cancel it. You need to be able to get up and say whatever that's on your heart. Because my crowd is your brother, your nephew, your uncle, your dad, your grandson, my son. Black people unite.
Alright, um. How y'all doing? Um, my name's Alexis Sulton. I'm gonna follow the instructions. I live at Fort Manor Lane. That's in Lake Pembroke. Pembroke is in here, you know? Okay, I also, alright. That's great, anyway. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take up three minutes of your time, because you don't deserve three minutes of mine. That's just real. Um, my question is, and I know you're not gonna answer it, but I have one question. And I just, I wanna ask why there was low accountability among the people sitting up there? Um, it could have all been so simple. We know you don't understand, and by us, I mean the black people. You know what I mean? But none of us would be here if the police chief you guys put in office would have just came forward and said, "We apologize." This was handled wrong. You understand? Uh, just give us a minute, he can nut our investigation. If he had went over and apologized to the mother, you understand, so she could have some form of peace of mind to cheat most sweet that night. Just, just something, but there was nothing. You showed up to Camp Hill with, in riot here. For what? We don't have the rights to burn. We don't have the rights to be upset because somebody was killed. That doesn't make sense. I'm just saying, you know, um, I'm almost done. Uh, that's not even my question. My question is what I ask. I just really want that to rest on your hearts, because I know you're not gonna answer it, but when you lay down and you go to sleep, or some of you guys have kids, I want you to put your kids in bed tonight, and I want you to think, if they were shot, what you would want the police chief to do. That's important. And we know, we know we put in bed one of your kids, and you're not gonna understand that, and we get that. But I just, I just want that to rest on your hearts, because that's what we're going through. We have to have one apology, one, one. And that's the message. Sitting up there, her own center. How you doing? Um, we have to have one apology from you. And that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. I have two simple questions, or maybe one is a request. First and foremost, I would like to know when these meetings are placed for notification. I go through other municipalities and I see signs. The council meeting is such and such. I lived in Ferguson for 20 years. I have yet to see a sign that says council meeting is such and such. We need signs, we need notification. I came to the city hall to ask, and I was told, check channel 2. My response was, I don't always listen or look at channel 2. So my suggestion is that whoever made the signs for I love Ferguson, maybe they need to make some changes to announce the council meeting. Now, I have one more request, because twice I have gone on the website, and twice I have put in my email, and twice I get the response, your email is pending. I don't know what that's all about, but all I wanted was to get an agenda for the meetings. So would you please go and check your email sign, we have said. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? If this is supposed to be the question and answer, why are you only in the answering questions? I haven't heard any answers.
As we stated, our meetings will always entail a public comment portion of the meeting. This is a business meeting in the city council with our regular public comment portion we will be having in the near future. Word-based, word-based, excuse me, excuse me. Word-based community forums that will be led by members of the city council so we can have that interaction. So at this point, again, we are taking comments so that we can get active answers that you seek.
Okay, here's one more. How can you propose a deal for a first reading when the council has a mandate? Have you all been reading secret? If this is true, is it illegal for you to do it? Can you answer that today?
This is the first reading, because this is our first meeting. So yes, this is our first meeting, first meeting. We will be, we will be meeting again. We will have our second reading in a little while.
Yes, my name's Larry Mel. I've been in St. Louis for four years. And this is not the first time that I've seen this type of chaos after two places in Ferguson and alerted the world to what's going on in St. Louis. I just want to first act the past two decades in this church. So if you ever see this venue, you know it's here. I think that. Second of all, I want to thank the council up there for recognizing a problem by giving us a bone with these little cuts that you're doing. Because that is, you recognize something is wrong. But we're not gonna stop like that. That's what they're gonna oppose for us. Because we've been struggling a long time, like Dan said. And it's not just about my mom. It's a lot of poverty, poverty, poverty going on in St. Louis. Like I know, like I'm trying to find life here. Our young folks need jobs. You know, the city, of all the cities, they come up with something with some program for the young folks so they don't get too about it. You know, so they get out. So they can just get their education. Some of them go to some of the schools, some of them go to camp. A lot of folks like to just, like they said, we're not rich. We can't even have money ourselves to count. So we need your help. If we even want you here, if you still owe some of our money back by helping us. Don't say, bro. Don't beat us down. Don't shoot us when we're at the store. We're afraid to send our kids to the store. We live in a city that we're paying our tax dollars for, but we're not getting our tax dollars in service. The type of service that we often get, I've been listening for 20 years. All over St. Louis. It's not just about Ferguson. This is about management. This is about what's going on in St. Ferguson, turning older to take care. And then one day with that militarized type police tactics. We don't like it, you have a right to conduct us. Move your son out of there for 40 and a half hours. And then they sit in the morning, come up after people ask, why won't you go? What is wrong with y'all? And if you don't see this, we see. That's why people are saying we're gonna organize, we're gonna vote, we're gonna pull us candidate. And if you don't wanna help us and have worked with us, we're gonna work ourselves. You know, that's what we need to do. We all know, we all know. So we're gonna prepare, so you need to get in there. Because this final, it is just.
First of all, I want to say, the city.
Josh, my name's Josh Little. Chill out. I'm from Ferguson. Um, first of all, I'll say, first of all, we just want to mesh up the people for first. Because now we're out there, we have two heads of people. We got kids who are just trying because they sure they're gonna get shot in the little street. Kids are trying because they getting two heads. And we got elderly people out there getting two heads. And the people got asked, "Y'all don't care about that at all?" Y'all just care about being in the streets, about any meat y'all want to do. So while y'all got on y'all and everything else, that's not doing nothing. Because we better be strong in the streets. And we gonna be out here until we get justice. And I would say this, if you get justice, y'all are gonna get justice. Y'all are gonna get justice if y'all got on because it's gonna be cast to the street. Because I'm gonna be out here every day. I'm gonna be out here every day. Every day. All day. So let that kind of get justice. And y'all can see more stuff in the streets. Everybody in Ferguson got questions. Y'all gotta answer them. That's why we're here tonight. We doing our answers now. And y'all gonna give it to us or else it's just gonna be more problems in the streets. We all have to have that money. If y'all shooting on purpose, we all going down. We all telling them our rights. All the police outside, they, they, y'all gonna have their own cost for nothing. Y'all cost for us to get this hangout out of the police. And the police, because of us, we react because they don't know what they gonna do. They already shot up, um, half of the black people folks in the city. So we expect to do. We gonna react because we all want. And we all gonna stay here until justice is served. And we gonna stand up for our rights and we gonna stand up for the citizens of the city of Ferguson. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to say that I was a young man who walked up to Ferguson and he was beaten. And then later they said, "Wrong person or the wrong Henry Davis." Now, Kim, T.I.H.N., I don't know how to spell your last name, but you're sitting on the board right now. And you were the police officer that beaten him and they charged him with destruction of pump, destruction of property for leaving on your uniform. We coming for your feet, ma'am. Go out of elections, Google it, get on it, register this for Ferguson. One year, get your name on the ballot, pass out, pass out sheets. We coming for your feet, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Mary Robinson and I'm a resident of Ferguson. I've been out here for thirty-five years. I raised my kids here. And I have a simple question to ask and I just assumed I could get an answer. I went to the Ferguson City Hall because I wanted to know if you had a human rights commission board or some place that I could file a complaint if I had a concern and get some answers. I was told that you didn't have a human rights commission and that you never had one. And who told you to come up here anyway? So, um, I just said, I didn't disrespect you. I said, "Nobody." I just assumed the court building would be the place I'd come. And the receptionist told me, "You need to go to Clayton." I said, "I need to go all the way to Clayton to file a concern about Ferguson?" She said, "Yeah, go to the Clayton courthouse." So there, I did go. They told me that I could not file a, a, a grievance or a complaint against Ferguson. That was only for St. Louis County Police Officers and employees. I came back to Ferguson City Hall today and I stood there and asked the same question. Do you have a human rights commission board? I asked the fourth guy. He told me his name was Matt and he said, "I'm busy and I gotta go to a meeting." And so I asked him, I said, "What is the lady's name? Excuse me, what's the lady's name that I talked to yesterday?" He said, "You don't need to know her name." I said, "Yes, I do too. I need to know her name." So I, I laughed. And I think I was treated very rudely and you disrespected me. And even though you disrespected me, I remain calm. I didn't disrespect you. And I just want to say, thank you and God bless you.
How's everyone doing? Mayor, how are you? I know you know my face. Um, we spoke maybe about a week ago and I told you we were gonna start holding you accountable. Remember that? Here we are today. You said this is your city council meeting and this is business. Well, look around you. We're not gonna let you go back to business as usual. It's not going to happen. You can go ahead and put your head down and shake your head, but this is an example and we're moving it to you today. Until you let us go about business as normal, drive down our streets without getting harassed. There has not been a day that I've been in Ferguson that I have not seen a black person sitting outside on the curb. I bet you don't have to do that when you go to your job. Let us be business as usual. We'll let you be business as usual. We're holding you accountable. I told you we were going to and now we are. The community is tired. We're tired of being oppressed. We're tired of being lied to. You sit up there and you lie to us repeatedly. And we're not gonna take it anymore. Because now, like I said, we're going to hold you accountable. You said, and this is coming out of your mouth at the Michelle Martin event, that Mike Brown body sat up for four and a half hours because St. Louis County PD had to conduct their investigation. You remember that? Does anyone remember that? Last night on the news, you all sent that coroner up there and said it was an unsafe situation. We know there was no unsafe situation. The police kept me creating the unsafe situation. And another point that you said at the Michelle Martin thing. Give me your videos. Give me your officers' names that have misconduct and I'll make sure they're taken care of. How many Ferguson police officers have been let go? Not resigned, let go. We're gonna make sure y'all get let go. And so I'm here to tell you again, we're going to hold you accountable. No thanks.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Rebecca McCall. I'm actually a missionary and I am not a resident of Ferguson, but I feel like I have taken on the family of Ferguson. I have been down here with you guys and I just have one simple question. Um, I'm trying to be optimistic, but when I saw the panel, I really wanted to take my question home. But my question to the panel is, how are you getting Ferguson residents involved with trying to be unified, to be equal, um, to help you, an free meal person? But how many black-owned businesses are you allowed to open up in Ferguson? What red tape will they have to go through? Um, I have insight that more outsiders, more foreigners are coming in with their businesses, but it's hard for black-owned establishments to come into Ferguson and be successful. Um, my second question is, how are you gonna allow Ferguson residents to come out and help with this protest? You have a lot of outsiders coming into Ferguson trying to help Ferguson get justice, but if I look around and I inquire, there's no one from Ferguson. So what are you doing to help them know they're able to vote? How are you encouraging us to exonerate and letting them know they do have rights? They can vote. What are you gonna do? That's my question. How are you gonna draw the residents and get them more involved with this movement?
Good evening, everyone. Floyd Blackwell. Uh, former hair of Cool Valley. Parent all of it in Cool Valley. You know, seventeen years ago, we had some of the same problems in the Cool Valley. And we got involved and we changed it. And two years ago, we let our police force. Now, Mayor, I did not come to pout on you. Over this whole ordeal, we have not pout on you. People say you love Ferguson. People are mad as hell. Even ones that love Ferguson are mad as hell. And I'm one of them. I still did come to pout on you. Now, there is a young man, Tony Randall, got a VWI in his driveway. He's been there at Anderson a couple times. Probably wearing the uniform. But when he got arrested, they y'all him out. He said, "I've never been more humiliated in my whole life." He'd been trying to fight this for five years. This may be a blessing in disguise to him. Now, what happened when we chose Morgan as to Ferguson? A bunch of negative things were said. I guess we're like geniuses about right now. I still not here to pout on you. What I'm gonna say is this here. There's a, uh, a bill in St. Louis County, a diversity bill, and some of the county council is trying to fight for twenty-five percent. Well, I ask you this here. Why don't all over the United States you give us seventy-five percent and you guys take twenty-five percent, alright? You talking about you don't have a job? Give us seventy-five percent. All sidewalks, all the business, all the contracts, give black minorities seventy-five percent for the next five years. Alright? And so far as the city of Ferguson's concern, looking forward, going forward. In St. Louis, we used to have black gas stations, black grocery stores, black businesses who were born to be proud of St. Louis. Now today, there ain't nothing like it. And it's not just black. We're human. We're people. We're taxpayers. We don't wanna leave taxation without an expression. All we ask is to sit at the table. Now, how about allowing these businesses to have small returns loans? We can get them in there. I mean, gas stations, car dealerships, you name it. Clean us all the way down the road. Whatever you give them business, let them do business. Let us do business. Let's do business together and we can solve this thing.
Hello, my name is Shelley. My address is nine one seven one West Florissant. I have prepared a statement for you guys. There are three things I want to talk to you about today. Communication, treatment, and an action for the future. First off, under communication, harassment. It is evidently, evident that residents of Ferguson have long time been since raised. Name badges. It's unreasonable for any officer to do credit for her job without a name badge. In fact, that is a false misconduct to the residents and the people passing through Ferguson. Misrepresentation. She just has stated on the news that there were numerous sunshine requests for information regarding Mike Brown. However, several news reports have said that there were not numerous reports. The last thing this community needs are more mistrust. Limited accessibility. The city should have a long time ago had a genuine relationship with their residents. All residents. This means police officers, the mayor, and council members should have aggressively stopped open and trusting partnerships with taxpayers in Ferguson. Because this has been non-existent. You have the Mike Brown movement in your face because of your ongoing neglect. Second thing, treatment. Excessive force. The most alarming fact that created more mistrust among residents was excessive force used for children's faces. New dogs, people were shot with rubber bullets and two days to hours. This treatment is not even allowed and worn overseas. Ticketing. We further have an issue with intentional targeting and ticketing of primarily African-American residents. It is very clear to everyone that they're out of Ferguson that city of Ferguson condones aggressive racial profiling. This must end. Now let's get to action. Civilian Review Board. Now, I personally dismed when I heard that there is an existing civilian review board. While there are existing cases against the city for collecting this treatment, it is just tasteful to know that the current civilian review board has not been activated or used. That is why we seek a review of what authority the Ferguson civilian review board currently has. It needs to be updated to the residents' satisfaction. Diversity training. Secondly, we demand diversity training for all existing council members, the mayor, and all law enforcement. Quality relationships. Every officer has the responsibility to have personal relationship with residents based on trust and active communication. Let me get this last one out, guys. Crisis for pro-life crisis situation. Moving forward, the city of Ferguson needs to figure out what to do in a crisis. It is evident that the tactical operation of law enforcement was flawed from the very beginning. Residents and protesters were treated as animals and monkeys. We were treated like third-class citizens. But let me let you know, today, we tell you no more. You are now on notice. Cast you. Make your case now before the world sees something worse. Thank you.
My name is Brian Like. Nineteen sixty-nine, you still love me, some of you. I'm only six feet long, my four, four fatalities. Uh, I lived in Ferguson for eight years. Clarion and Canfield was actually my bus stop. So when I say I love Ferguson, I kinda mean it. And you can kinda look at me as a constituent as well. Uh, I don't have any questions. Uh, I just have some demands. Since we're not having questions answered, I completely understand that. My first demand, my first demand is that for all the people, like she so eloquently put, all the people that were tear gassed, that were wrongfully arrested, my first demand is that you drop all those charges of anybody that was arrested. Anyone that was arrested and thrown in jail and had their lives taken from them for three months and hours is too long. Five minutes is too long for me to sit here. That's my first demand. So I pray to God that you're listening and you're writing this down. Here's the next thing. And I'll keep this really short. I've tried to, but I only got a minute fifty. On August the eighteenth, I stopped business as usual. I went down to West Florissant because, like I said, I love Ferguson and I noticed that my brothers and sisters on the front line were facing militia. They, they were facing, with their picket signs, they were facing guns and tear gassed prisoners. I noticed that and I went down there to help keep the peace, to protect and serve, if you will. Unfortunately, unfortunately, while I was there, helped me some of my brothers and sisters realize, okay, maybe we could plan this out. Maybe we can work this a little bit better. Maybe if we're gonna get arrested, we could plan to get arrested on a full belly. I'm trying to help us out on our way to leave. I'm trying to help us out, and on our way leave, we get tackled and arrested. So here's the irony of the situation. I spent more time in jail than Derrick Wilson. So I demand, my last demand, is that you do everything in your power to have this man arrested.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Lottary. My address is number two, Cricket Court. I can't understand about the officer Derrick Wilson. Uh, you all was looking at his name for over a week. And, um, today, my crime, it acted as employment at the corner of Stewart. The Department of Justice said that the video being released was caused by ill feelings within the community as a result of the video being released. Community members were angered, and they called for transparency. It was watered down with the blood thrown at the young man who did not defend himself. Officer, officer Wilson also was getting paid like, he was getting paid like he's all company people now. He's all y'all make it, people. He getting, I'm not about to call, first of all, it's, uh, it's eleven members up there for the city council board. It's only one black man up there. That's one, that's one city that got seen, okay? Then, this young man been shot down, he been murdered, and you all still being this officer, a fellow. That's not right. That's, that's the one I'm saying. I have, I have two young men, I raised, two young men in college. And they, they get tickets from you all, after they, you all forth from. Pass sixty, every, every month. Pass fifty dollars, one of them, fifty they come. That's not, I think they're housing also like the other, other young men that was saying. And then, uh, all these, all these community viewers, and it's Asian, and, uh, all these Hispanic, everybody on the business level, we don't have any business. That's another thing. And then, when you all ready to hire police officers, let us, let us free them, let the tables, let the residents free, who do the police officers are. I think Ferguson should, all the police officers should be, uh, should, should be fired, all, all of them. And, and, and the chief of police, all of them. Okay, and there, and there, and there, all, sold all over again for fresh. Because all of you all been crucified from the very, from the very beginning, okay? And that's, that's what I'm hearing here, because this has been going on for too long, okay? Too long. I've been active since nineteen eighty-two. We still haven't gotten no work. And that don't make no sense. So that's what I'm hearing today, because I wanna see all of you all removed. I wanna see a whole new, uh, and black people up there. I wanna see half and half. Not, not even half and, or ten and one, half and half, half black and half white. Do it right this time. That's what I'm, I don't know who's the favorite, to say what's on my heart, 'cause I live here. I was born here, okay? That don't make no sense. I'm gonna be out there with those babies, watching with them, seeing them, and make sure they okay. But I'm gonna tell you, we're not gonna work until, until we see some kind of pain. First of all, with you all.
Hello. My name is Mike Brown. My address is Brown Zero. City council, we want your addresses. We want your offices. We want your jobs. You feel that you all are representing the people of Ferguson and the rest of the people that in the United States, in this country, and throughout the world? We find that we ain't gonna take them no more, alright? We find that we ain't gonna take them no more, alright? That it's a game, right? 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 We didn't tell you we was not gonna play. We want answers. We want your jobs. And we want to act for all the practices that you guys, it's not new, you've been doing it for a long time, and you know that. Stop harassing us. Stop shooting our children down in the streets. And we ain't gonna stop till it stops.
So, I came here tonight to see what the face of Ferguson... Some of you council members. I wanted to come here tonight to see what the face of Ferguson was going to look like. Whether it was gonna look different than the militarized police riot that I saw on my TV screen and that I saw from Greater St. Mark's Church in the last few weeks. And unfortunately, what I saw here tonight was the face of nothing but white police officers confronting this crap. And they can smile here today, or they can riot in the streets tomorrow, but those white police officers are a symbol of structural racism, which is at the heart of this problem. Okay? And I have to say that you all have become the face of white structural racism. If I'm honest with you tonight, you've lost your authority to govern this community. I think it's clear, if you look at the people here tonight, that you're gonna have to step aside gracefully if this community is gonna heal. And on the off chance that you don't accept my recommendation in that regard, I wanna point out something that happened here tonight that's also a symbol of the problem. I came here hoping to see that you all would institute some effective civilian review. But what I think I heard tonight, your meeting wasn't exactly user-friendly, but what I think I heard here tonight was that you already introduced a bill for civilian review without us consulting your community. I'm sure you're gonna hear from the Justice Department that if you wanna affect this civilian review, at least it comes from the people. And if you want effective civilian review, you should be sending representatives to the national conference that's happening in Kansas City this weekend on civilian review to get some advice before you start implementing something that's only gonna set things backwards. I wanna know, there is an alderman in the city of St. Louis who's been working for more than ten years to get effective civilian review in the city, and we're gonna get it in the very near future. But have you all consulted that alderperson to find out what might work? Have you looked to see what the people want? Does your bill have subpoena power? Doesn't have independent financial status? Doesn't have anything that can represent effective community input and transparency? And so if you all want to leave the stage gracefully, you're gonna have to turn on a dime and become very different people and present a very different face from what you've seen all of us so far.
Alright, my name's Adam, I'm from North County. I've been driving from Ferguson all my life, riding from Ferguson all my life. To back up what he said, and what I'm a little confused about is that you all came out with these rules tonight and told us what was gonna happen. Didn't ask us what was gonna happen. And when you all said who was gonna vote on it, I didn't see anybody raise their hand. So this is still a secret conversation that you're still hiding from us. And you all made your minds up before y'all even got here. So if half the people disagreed, I didn't see them raise their hand. If half the people supported, I didn't see them raise their hand. I heard one person talk and say, "Do you agree?" "Yes, it's passed." "Do you agree?" "Yes, it's passed." I didn't see one person say aye, or nay, or nothing like that. So y'all had these plans before you got here. And I wanna ask this between the parish church and between the first speaker. Who made the decision at a public hall meeting that you all won't answer the public's questions? So can you answer that? What? Just run and answer. Who decided that you all would not answer the public at a public hall meeting?
First of all, I do have the right to answer that question. Because number one, church, remember this. All we have done was allow this meeting to be held. Nothing else. Nothing else. Business of Ferguson is handled by, by the council and not by greater church. What we have done is simply allow the city of Ferguson to be here. We simply opened our doors and saw.
I was just addressing Ferguson more, not you personally, but the other second rules. Just try, I mean, obviously to try to keep us cool, 'cause it's not a buzz. But when he started talking, he only had his mind made up, he ain't gonna say nothing to us. So basically, they just got shields up, we just talking, and whatever they gonna do, they already gonna do.
Just say this, the church...
What I'm asking is...
I'm gonna say this to you. The church does not accept the rules. It's simply allowing me to come.
I'm saying it. I'm saying it. If you wanna answer my question, who decided that you all would not answer questions tonight?
Sir, again, as I stated when we began this meeting, this is a business meeting of Ferguson City Council. So in the course of our business meetings, we always have a public comment portion of the meeting. This is a public comment portion of our business meeting. We will be having actual town hall forums in the near future, in each room. But this meeting is just so that we can continue the business of our city overall. And many of the things that we've done here tonight are in response to the comments that have been made by yourself and others that we've known with who has raised. So we are taking input. That is the purpose of this meeting, not to answer questions.
So you brought all this media to listen to us, but not really speak to us. You talking to us, but have not listened to us.
Sir, we're listening. That's what we're here to do today, just listen.
Uh, like I said, I think you all had your minds up before you got here. That's what it looks like to me, and it's the same way it's been in Ferguson. And y'all acting like that's the same way it's gonna stay. I'm just saying, we're here for this being, let it keep going on, right up.
Yes, my name is Deborah. I've been at Ferguson for seventeen years. I'm so, I'm so glad when I stopped seeing all these faces. You know, when you try to talk to Ferguson, this happened, it happened to Mike Brown for us to get our votes voted. I couldn't get my voice heard when I called, when I called in stolen last year. You know what Ferguson police did? When I got up to call, my phone stole, they came and locked me up. Oh, I made fifteen hundred dollars, and locked my daughter. Left my grandbaby for a month old in the bed, and I said, "My grandbaby's in the bed." He said, "He didn't get a whoo in there." Yes, he did. I called and asked for the map. I had to borrow thirteen hundred dollars, and my daughter had to pay. You know, I went to, I went to, uh, to see the map, and they said I couldn't see the map. I went to check this place, cousin said they don't have anything on Ferguson. I got back home, I called the Division of Family Service and told them about my grandbaby. You know what they told me? I should've found somebody to keep him. Find somebody to keep him with my head behind my back. Ferguson, they went ahead, my car, towed my car, and I go to the judge, talk to the judge, and tell him what's going on. You know what the judge do? He sitting up, took his cell phone, and then say, "I'm guilty." Me and my daughter paid fifteen hundred dollars a piece. Not only that, when my kids was young, I had paid eight hundred just for my son to go to school, 'cause he was gonna be in there. I'd be glad when we see some other pieces of cause. Because it's sad, it had come down to Mike Brown getting killed for our votes to be heard. It's sad when we have to tell him and talk about what happens to me. It's sad when we have to, for Ferguson to come to my house, tow my car, and it's got tags on, 'cause it's in my driveway. And charged me four hundred feet. I had to receive. And it's sad, we need a legal, heavy ass one, huh? Ooh, boot, please on.
Good evening, everybody. I'm over here. My name is Suzanne, and I'm the DJ. And I, I've been with this since August the ninth. And, uh, my heart is a little heavy, 'cause I, my, my feelings is on. And I wanna talk about my emotions. See, I'm a mother before I'm anything else, Mer knows. And Mike Brown could've been mine's. And, and I want the panel to understand. See, for me, it's no longer about a black and white. For me, it's about what's right and wrong. And if we as black people, we don't stand for something, we don't fall for anything. But Mer knows, I have had the chance to talk to you. See, I'm the lady from across the street in front of Ferguson Police Department. I'm the one that don't ever go home. I'm the one that's always who the police see at the beginning, and I'm never when the police is time to block out, 'cause we not going nowhere. But I just want you to know, listen to me. See, because all these people, you see, the majority of Ferguson, we North County, and we got power. I don't want nobody on this panel to think that we just, the black people don't have power because we do. We got so much power, we can really vote y'all out of here, and that's just being one hundred. However, I'm about what's right and not about what's wrong. I'm, I'm like what they said earlier, all we wanted, this just wasn't about Ferguson. It's about everybody, because where there's the action, there's the reaction. This is gonna go global. Whatever y'all do with Derrick Wilson, it's gonna affect the whole country. Yeah, and we, nobody wants that. We just wanted an apology. We wanted an apology. There is no way that if a black man was to go kill a white man, we locked up automatically. I wanted to sit so high, it ain't even no need to try to call nobody. And I'm just talking in my feelings because I, we got value, we black people. Our life is valuable. But somebody keeps saying that our life is not valuable, but it is. And then you refer, I talked to you. You said that you wanna make change, that y'all had to do something different. It should not take for Mike Brown to die for some change to come. That's not how we work. There is no way that it's only three blacks, fifty whites, the police department, Ferguson School District Board is all white, the board. It's something wrong with that. But black people, that's keeping our druthers, we got to get out and vote. We got to be accountable when it comes time to that change. We accountable. We got to do it for us, 'cause they not gonna do it for us. Don't forget November, it's time to vote. Don't forget April, it's time to vote. You better get up and you better stand for something. Ain't no more sitting down. Y'all better, we got to get it together as a people. It ain't about black and white. It ain't about black and white no more. It's about what's right and what's wrong.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My name is Mike Brown. My address resides, Brown Zero. What you know about that? What I wanna say is, I'm very disappointed in America. I'm talking about America, the land of the free. And every time it rhymes in my mind, and I see there's not equal opportunity, and we're hypocrites, because we're holding something that would've been brainwashed and it's hard for a long time. It's over with. I'm tired of it. I am forty-nine years old, I got grandkids, I got kids. And this been going on for a long time. Let me tell you something, this ain't, this ain't just about Ferguson. This is St. Louis, Missouri. This is St. Louis, Missouri. You check your history, you check your state, look at all the missed opportunities, and that's a political reality in all our municipal jobs. But let me tell you, we here. And I'ma tell you one thing, when God died, it had to take his bullshit for us to go through another hole, which is heaven. Mike Brown's bullshit, it's a Michael's bullshit for us to keep it to level. And we won't be there, and it's true from my experience.
Hello, yes. My name is Michael Jackson. Yes, I'm a convicted felon. Yes, like Mike Brown, I was accused of stealing. Yes, like Mike Brown, I'm a felon. None of that stuff for me. But you, Chief, say no account. You issued security to permit to work in the city, and he shot me twice. Then, and I'm a convicted felon, and the crowd was telling like when Mike Brown got shot. They rushed me away because of my past criminal record. They sentenced me by incarceration. They gave me a fine of fifty thousand dollars. And I only work for a ten service. The police is, it goes to the shoot. Because if you issued the dude the gun that lives in this county to work in my city, and shoot me, he ain't gonna do it on credit, you better believe it. He ain't gonna shoot me for a three night nap to get away with it. Okay, it's death. It ain't a wink of a trace on. And I said, "That could've been one of my grandsons." But being Mike Brown got shot after me, when they put me in the workhouse for those three months, you know what? I prayed to God that I'd find a way out. And I had a PD who couldn't do the job third. He went in there and got me a fine reduction to five thousand dollars, ten percent. And the, and the security said he shot me on a certain topic. But just like when water goes to the Lord, they know it ain't nothing but the blood of Jesus, it's gonna be rich. They didn't have my blood on their pocket. But the second rule was police department, come along, do it next to criminal offense. Who you, they were meant to permit to carry the gun? Who was incompetent? Who came out the store with his hand on his gun, showing pre-landification? My blood is my witness. I got shot, but I told them I got shot. It really is, I'm being indicted to stay in trial. On the twenty-eighth of this month, my name is Michael Jackson. You look for my website on Facebook, you gonna see me watching. You gonna see me turn that pot before they cut field. I have faith in the Lord, my blood is my witness. Jesus blood is my witness. It's one life, one death, one baptism, and if I didn't have the Lord, hm, that old man up here in your house. But I'm keeping him down, you best to believe it, please, Lord.
Mr. Mayor, uh, as a local pastor of this community, I've, my name is Derrick Robinson. I've been out every single day from the day that Mike Brown was shot and killed. One of the things that concern me is that, and I've been talking to you, collaborating with you, collaborating with Chief Jackson, is that there's not been an apology to the community of this tragic issue. And, and I've heard, I've heard that you said that it wasn't technical. Hold on, hold on. It wasn't... Okay, hold on, let me finish, let me finish. Also, number two is that I was put in handcuffs as I was out trying to police the crime. One of the officers, Captain Johnson, had to tell the Ferguson officer, well, that was before Captain Johnson took over. Somebody was like, "That's one of Pastor Robinson." But I was put in the white, whatever they call them things. Whatever, yeah. And so my thing was, I never personally got an apology, not that I asked for one. But my community, and it's not about, I, I heard someone saying that you stated that you had white privileges. But as a community, we have privileges, we have rights. And I think as a community, they need to hear from the leader of this community. To say, "I apologize, you may wasn't present." But as the leader, I think they need to hear from you as they move forward. I think that is step one to, to move forward. Well, yeah, it was hold on.
Lady, how long you gonna go? That's my question.
I know. They said that to the family, but then I wanted an apology, sir.
You do it all. My name is Tori Russell. I want to hands up unite. I didn't know what to do. I saw a deadline on my timeline. I went to the police station after I lost Tanfield. And we've been protesting every day and strategizing every day since then. It ain't no business that between you. I heard, I heard the, uh, the, the mayor say, it's no person that doesn't have a race for us. And it must be you two persons. The mayor, because I'm doing my homework on you, you don't even have it first. You just own property there. So you are outside agitator. 'Cause I'm in the city, and I'm one of those outside agitators. And I'ma give you two examples of outside agitators. Dr. Martin Luther King and Hillary Clinton, who had a prayer to break the law for the people. And I'm an outside agitator. There's the lady, Piana, who went to spend seventeen days in Ferguson jail, and then passed around thirteen other days when she got arrested again for bench wounds, lost her house, lost her job, hurting her kids on her homes. The bench wound too little, too late. I caught you, you stole the cookie. It's not happening. I caught you, you flew later with fifteen percent, it's not cutting. This one municipality, I'm ninety-one, and I'm not taking. We shutting highways down. We wanna enjoy that beautiful, nice ball game. We wanna watch the football, 'cause we gonna be everywhere that you and everybody you love reside. I don't have nothing but time on my hands, 'cause y'all gonna give me a job, and I'm almost finished with my degree. But you giving me bench wounds, so I can't coach football and teach the kids some history. So I'm gonna be out here again every day. Good luck riding the halls tomorrow. Good luck going to the game next week. And tell all your family members I might see you at work another day. See you later.
Justice, justice. Hello? I appreciate, I would say, everybody for coming out. I wanna thank all the brothers that's been down on those floors, especially the youth that have been out there. I don't wanna say and, and give condolences and tell the Brown family that we are with them and will always be with them in the show. Uh, when I came, I thought I could ask two questions and get some answers, but obviously that's not gonna happen. One thing I wanted everybody to know is that we've been giving lip service for a very long, long time. When we hear things that you say and you make confidence about what you gonna do for us, we do understand that there is another agenda. When you look at Puerto Rico, when you look at Kenla, when you look at Berkeley, when you looking at the Ferguson Forests School District, took funds from the airport and moved one of the most, that's the most tradition in Berkeley, and that's Berkeley High School. We couldn't even name it, Berkeley High School. It had to be McClure in front of it. And so as I sit in the schools where I work in, I started looking at the school board and, and councilman. I said to myself, "Where else can you go? In a European-dominated area and find hundred percent of the school board and the council is African-American." Maybe one, around here, anywhere. And so what we're getting to is we're saying that if we are two-thirds of Ferguson, then eighty-nine gotta go. And we know through the petition process that we can get every last one of them removed. And the person that we go for, who he in his place, is gonna definitely, definitely gonna get rid of the police chief. That's a must, that is a must. I wanted to ask the councilmen, see if they had enough guts to answer the question. Do they know how the mayor can be removed from office? And do they agree that it should happen? So when you say that there's no issue with race, that there's no issue going on in our streets, I've been in Berkeley all my life, and I've seen it. From corrupt police that steal money, for tickets for grants for a thousand dollars. We need representation, we need unity. It's a lot of brothers out here that have assembled, and we are ready. All we ask is that the people support us. If you got a bottle of water at home, bring it. If you got a sandwich, bring it. If you can just tell some people, do that, then we gonna change this thing, everybody.
Good evening to the chairman, to the council. And I say good evening to all my comrades. Power to the people! Power to the people! Power to the people! Power to the people! I can't hear you. Power to the people! I'd just like to be a justice council. This agenda these letters I have comes from a youth movement that was formulated after the death of a Mike Brown. The youth felt compelled to come together. They would be here today to let you know what they feel that need to be done by you all, security power, and have the power to be able to get it done. Number one, increase minority representation among police, firefighters, school teachers, and other municipal jobs. That means that it spread out the jobs among African-Americans as well as white Americans. Engage in aggressive outreach improvement and mentoring on job shadowing of African-Americans and other minorities in St. Louis County and the region to ensure that municipal jobs reflect the racial demographics of the communities that we serve. Law for state and federal legislation and policy reforms. Law for state and federal racial profiling laws, addressing inequities in policing of African-Americans and other minorities. We need to make sure, like the letter before me indicated, when you talking about having a citizen review board and addressing racial profiling, we need, we need to make sure that it's, it's, it's adequate. Educational enhancements, entrepreneurship programs in public schools focused on minorities and disadvantaged youth. Tutoring and mentor programs for minorities and disadvantaged youth. College preparatory courses focused on minorities and disadvantaged high schools that are students that include SAT, ACT, and vocational education. Public and private partnerships to establish scholarship loans for minorities and disadvantaged youth with interest on youth living in a campus or green housing complex in the name of Mike Brown. Because people don't know this way to talk, so we wanna make sure that you address that and let them know that you support their effort to get into higher education. Job training and high classes that provide minorities and disadvantaged poor residents with more jobs. Only job training, youth training program, except by public and private sector businesses located in Ferguson. Adopting minority business and workforce inclusion program goals for every contract that's left in Ferguson. It should be a minority goal that's inclusive to make sure minority businesses get a piece of it, to make sure that black African-American workers get on the job. That's the thing that you need to do to empower the youth. If you wanna fix it and not give service, make it happen. Adopt that, put it up on the table, and adopt and address the twenty-five and five and make sure that fifty percent of the workforce of Ferguson get included on all the projects between young people.
Good evening. I am a representative of Mike Brown. I am Mike Brown, and I'm clear in Ferguson. Now, what's the procedure? What's the procedure? What's the procedure? Now, what's the procedure with another man lies to the country? 'Cause you lied to the country. You told the country one thing and came back and said another. But guess what? We ain't going for it no more. We are united, and we gonna be here. Now, my thing is, I got two thousand dollars worth of misdemeanors worn here. I know, I know, but guess what? I, I called Ferguson and asked him, "Can I come and put two hundred dollars two years ago?" And they told me, "No." Now, the average be coming along, and they look, it's two thousand and something dollars. Yeah, I already paid, y'all. I put a hundred dollars on it, so you can't arrest me right now. But, look, what I'm asking is, what's your solution? You gave a lot of people a lot of backwash, but you never gave a solution. Now, you come to this, I'ma put a camera on the cops, but they control the cameras. Why not magnetize it when they get up?
Why not magnetize it when they get up off the court that the cameras come on for the negative? Why you, why not do that? Give a solution. Let's have a solution. Let's not give a small string no more, okay? We gonna be here as black people. We tired. Enough is enough. We, we speak with it at night. I sat there and watched Mike Brown, Mike, Mike, Big Mike, on the ground. And it wasn't him no more. It was one of my sons. It was my cousin. It was me. Why not give a solution and keep going now? It's too late for apology, for real. Because y'all could be there at first. Y'all could stop it by locking the cops up. If I didn't offer to lock up twenty-four hours and without a bond, five thousand, five hundred thousand. A minute. If I shoot a police dog, I'm gonna be locked up for life. Come on, give a solution. No more backwash.
Hi, I just want to give a quick announcement. My name is Patricia Vines. And I'm the Democratic Committee Woman for Ferguson Township. And I know that there's a, uh, a lot that we need to do here in Ferguson. So I would just like to let you know that there is a leadership team from myself, State Rep Courtney Curtis, if he's still here, he could at least say, uh, Councilwoman Erby, Rochelle Walton Rain, and State Rep Sharon Pace. We will be having weekly meetings at Greater St. Mark's Family Church on Thursdays from six to eight. We're gonna be doing voter education, teaching people how to organize. And we want to make sure that if there's any changes, they come from the people of Ferguson, and we want to give you the tools that you need. So Thursday from six to eight, we'll be in there. You have to learn some basics. Uh, what we're truly in, we know there's some things that need to be done, but hopefully we'll see most of the Ferguson residents on Thursday for voter education and learn how to organize.
Listen, uh, announcement before we go to our next speaker. I've been advised that, um, if you are planning on voting in Ferguson, you have to do that by October the sixth. You can do that at any eighth, not eighth, October the eighth. And you can do it at any urban league. You need to do it by October the eighth.
First of all, first of all, I am Mike Brown. My condolences go out to his family and everyone, and all his supporters. L.B.! L.B.! First of all, my first issue is the fact that you guys hired a police officer that came from Genesee that was racist. So who wouldn't have been popped? You really tell me that? Who went to the street and wondered if he had a racist background? He know these targets, them black men. Let me know that. I know you ain't gonna ask no question, something you'll throw it out there. I am Mike Brown. I've been out on Brown's tour, took ass, wired shields, dogs, and all. And we ain't doing a basic protest, which is still harassment, illegal brutality. And when is gonna stop? And I know when is gonna stop because Mike Brown, he came to me in a dream. I seen this young man die. And I know give you his chills, I seen him die out there. And I know my purpose about being out there, but I know now that this is bringing everybody here. We got somewhere all the way across the country. So you can't tell me St. Louis ain't making it work. And you think it's Ferguson? It's really St. Louis. Really St. Louis. This is not no game. This is not no joke. What's going on right now? You're playing for your life. This is the new form of slavery. The mentality is controlled. This is feeling our blood, stuff, put our head out, we see police. This is a mind thing. This is, this was started years ago, I say years ago, when the criminality that came out. This is all I'm taking it back. For real, for real. I know the truth. I know who I am as a person. I am the rich of people. I don't got no racist shit against nobody. And I'm telling y'all, face the face. I am who I am. I am a young man, I have a cousin. Black is a, black is a, black come out pretty on black. I have a person to cousin. And we arguing like, this man is ours. The same story, the same story is in this dirt, runs through my DNA. Same materializing store is in my DNA. You can't tell me this word is ours. You been lying for longer. Why is that? County, my dude is, public education is different from the public education in all the city. Why though? Tell me why? Why they get taught different when we didn't get taught? Why they got pop college preparatory classes? Why they got classes to show us how we survive? When we get out of here, when we graduate, not so much no middle-aged job, mad mom? That's all we do for, Burger King, Lee's Chicken, all these places? Come on now, and tell me this. Why you at, everybody's going over here and they got all this store set up, but you ain't getting these gossip news as long as you store. Tell me that. And I don't even understand that. And the fact that you did, and Mike Brown died like that, man, and y'all ain't doing nothing about it. Second, twenty-three years old. Damn, I'm tied up in everything that I got from mine. I'm intelligent, I have sense. But you characterize me, and you stare up at me before you get a chance to know me as a human, baby. Now that ain't right. Tell everybody no. You understand? Come on now. L.B.! L.B. And I'm a justice man. I'm a justice man. I wanna run you out and I, and I really know that I hurt my soul that. And I really come out here and I give the people a chance to pick up, go back to town on the line. We gonna stand around, what you make a difference? Because the fact is, you put him in the hammer now, you put that boy in the black truck. Come on now, be for real. But somebody had incident, and they found it, pulled us out there in three minutes. Come on now, be for real. This way, this way going down like that. We all like Brown, the world's like Brown. So share me this thing.
Listen, I also have another announcement. You can also register to vote at nine one seven one West Forest. Uh, that's heel St. Louis. That's nine one seven one West Forest.
My name is Brian Fletcher. I'm the previous mayor of the city of Ferguson. I did not run for reelection in two thousand and eleven. Uh, please give me a moment to speak. I have a lot of history serving twenty-eight years in elective office in this community. I served for the committee for sixteen years, two terms as a school board, and then two terms as a mayor. A little history here. Several years ago, in the third ward, following open for council, not one citizen filed for the office. They closed without anyone filing. This is a fact. A gentleman rose to stand in on the election board as right candidate, received his vote and twenty-two others, and was elected to represent the third ward, which is the highest minority ward in the city of Ferguson. We've had two African-Americans on our city council in a hundred and twenty-year history. Listen, uh, please listen, okay? Both African-Americans ran on their own against white Caucasian consument and won in a, in a highest Caucasian ward in the city, or two. These are facts, alright? In a hundred and twenty years of our history, no other team, black or white, has ever been shot by a Caucasian. That's true. Never mind. Let me go on. You can get you out. Alright, let me, let me go on. I disagree with anyone else now, alright? Now, for sixteen years as committee man, I supported African-American candidates. Patricia Vines, Rashida Tlaun, Charlie Dooley, Hazel Erby, and I can go on and on and on. They've been in my home. They've come to my Christmas party. Now, listen to this. You're not gonna let me talk? You're not gonna let me talk? You're not gonna let me talk? Alright, now I grew up poverty myself. My father died when I was a young man. I was raised by a single mother who was not an American citizen. Thousands of miles, I lived on food stamps. I got social security benefits because my dad died. I went to school on Pell Grant. I understand some of the circumstances. Okay. If you won't listen, you can't understand, alright? Now, there are seven consument up here, not ten or eleven as stated, alright? When I attend the council meetings, and I still do, there should be less than ten residents in attendance that are twice monthly meeting, alright? And the last, listen, you want facts, I'll give you facts. You want us to answer? Alright. And the, and the last, it's time to stop for a few minutes, it's time to stop now, it's my time. My name, my name is Mike Brown, and I'm from round zero. The problem is, like with that man over there, the previous mayor and the current mayor, is they don't understand us. That, the people up there do not represent us. The police do not represent us. It is time for us to start getting sued and wounded and kick that you-know-what out of office. We have the power. They don't, you're trying to, you're trying to figure out, how do we get this young man, or old man, or whatever, the man, the man that's up on his, I don't care what we gotta say. How do we get him out? How we vote him out? We recall him out. It's time for him to go. A month ago, a young man was shot down several times, and that's a fact. His body laid on that pavement for hours, and that's the fact. All the videos, all the notices they can try to put out there, but the facts are out there. And they still are hiding behind one white officer. They are letting all this go on for one white officer. They are letting all of us do what we gotta do just for this one officer. But you know what? We gonna take them. Because the time that we gonna kick them out, they don't care about us. They don't care. It's been proven, they don't care. And they ain't gonna care until we show them that we have the power. They've been thinking for too long that black people don't love each other. That I don't love this sister, that I don't love this sister. Me and this brother can have all their peacefully posts for our rights. But guess what? It happened. And it ain't gonna stop. It don't continue to go on. We don't get justice. Young people will continue to stand up. We not fighting each other no more. That stuff is dead. We fighting them. Because they've been fighting us, and we gonna take it. We fired up, we fed up. It's time that we stand up. We young, we strong, and got, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. These people have made me, made me so angry that they will really do this, that they can get away with this, that they can get away with letting a young man die. It's a month later and the officer still isn't convicted. The mayor can see his mind, you-know-what up there telling us all these stories. We know the truth, he don't care. He don't care. So it's our time to show them the real truth. And man, you better enjoy this seat because a little bit is coming up, and you are out.
Everyone, I just have a few announcements. Tomorrow at seven thirty a.m. on the Target line, if you are coming to Ferguson Day with Senator Maria and all down in front of the red waving, we need you to be there at seven thirty a.m., okay? Um, next, if you are participating in the highway shutdown on Hanley, that will be taking place at three thirty tomorrow on Hanley. So let's make sure we're organized. And last word of business is that Ross tonight's decision, that if anybody throws right down again, they'll end the meeting. So let's make sure that we're not throwing the right down so we can make sure everybody gets a chance to talk. Thank you.
Excuse me, please. Excuse me, please. I do want to announce to everyone that there is a timer to this meeting. It stops at ten o'clock. But now it's at eight fifty-eight, and I know the council gave you three minutes. But I'm gonna recommend to the non-people standing, try and keep it to about a minute, two minutes. That way, you know, that way we're trying to make sure everybody can speak before ten o'clock, alright? Because the church, because the church does have schedule things we still need to do. We opened our doors for the meeting, so therefore go ahead.
Good evening, family. My name is Reverend David Tappin. A lot of you have noticed I was down on round zero, and I didn't go to jail, but that's okay. Family, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address this to you because I know you're not gonna answer. Number one, for the citizen review board, would you like to have a citizen review board where you have investigators and subpoena power? Would you like that? Would you like to have a citizen review board where any product or any incidents of misconduct or abuse of power, where you are actually sitting at the table along with the DA, along with the police, that you have the seat at the table?